I'm taking it later.
Yeah.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Suzie, you woke up with the zoning law.
Oh, yeah.
My son goes.
You're right.
You know what? You are the mayor.
No, I'm not.
Suzie, you think you woke up.
Here. Board member Chambers.
Here.
Board member Barkis.
Here.
Board member DeBoer.
Here.
And Chair Salzwiedle.
Here.
I'll look for a couple of the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Go ahead, Suzie.
Board member Groves.
Yes.
Board member Chambers.
Yes.
Board member Barkis.
Yes.
Board member DeBoer.
Yes.
And Chair Salzwiedle.
Yes. We'll look for citizen parlayments or items not on the agenda. We are going to have during our regular council meeting the same thing, so if you want to hold off for that, I would appreciate that, so we can move this along, Peggy.
Okay.
Unless it's for, you know, Mike will call that, so.
Oh, so this is an irregular council meeting?
No, this is the zoning board of appeals for something else, but we will have.
We won't have the council.
Yeah, council comments in the next meeting, so just wanted to point out. With that, we'll move on to new business, which is public hearing for various requests at 810 Riverside Drive.
Did you speak up?
Yeah, is that better? Should be on. Okay.
Hi, thank you, Dan. Patty, could you mind passing out? Captain's flag to all the talking members and then Suzie.
I'll pass it back to her.
Just reference, we did approve this variance, a different variance for this gentleman. Back at our last meeting, he proposed a, he went back to the drawing board and came up with another suggestion for his garage attachment, or it's not attachment, a standalone garage that he'd like to discuss tonight. So that's what we're meeting for tonight.
Yeah, what I requested really wasn't quite big enough for the community.
Could you use a microphone, please?
All right, well, can you? Is that better?
That's good.
Okay. All right. So what I'm really proposing is a insert of 28 feet, 32 feet. And what that allows us to do is park three vehicles in there. We're actually down a vehicle right now. In 2019, I spared a woman's life by squirting very quickly and then hitting a telephone pole, and I have not replaced that car yet. I don't need to do that. So that was part of the disconnect. Also, I've found that when you park cars in a garage, it's actually nice if you can open the doors to get back out. And at 28 feet in that, that really isn't possible. Even with 30 feet, that is, is very difficult. So also what that would mean at 28 feet is a good part of the year, we would have something big parked in the yard. At 32 feet, I don't have to do that. I can keep everything inside. So basically by allowing me to have that additional floor feet, that saves about nine to 10 feet in the yard and just makes things look a lot cleaner. The paperwork or the sheet that my wife and Leah passed out, that just shows what we have now, what we're kind of planning in the future. Right now, we have a pop-up camper. I'm 64 years old. I'm not going to be able to deal with a pop-up camper that many more years. And that means getting a regular hard-sided camper that you don't pop up, and those are generally a little bit bigger. So I want to be able to still park the full-size SUV in there in that camper trailer and keep it out of the yard. 32 is the only way one that will really allow me to do that. Any questions on the handout or any questions for me as well?
Kimball, you just said 32, but it's 31, correct?
Okay, yeah, let me explain that a little bit. So what my goal for this other round of pictures or drawings was is what space do I actually have inside? Because, you know, if anymore, you pretty much have to have a six-inch wall. And actually, this 31 ends up being less than that because with a polearm construction, you end up with thicker walls than that six-inch, which means really you're losing a little more space. So that 31 is taken, you know, if you do a traditional two-by-six construction, that takes off a foot, so you end up with 31 left. Good question.
The other question that I had to look at the other four is the height. Did you increase the height much by going with this wider?
So it would be 10 inches.
How much?
10 inches.
10 inches higher?
And if needed, I know that I had to, so most campers are about, once you put like a little air-conditioning unit on it, they're about 10 feet tall. So that's why I had planned on 11. If it helps, I can reduce that by six inches, which then gets me back to only four inches taller than what I had requested previously.
Marty, your construction, is that true on the six-inch beam to take up more?
Yeah, he's going to do a polearm structure, right, the six-by-sixes, and then you burn out the two-by-four to apply the 10. So, yeah, he is correct in that you do put space inside, and he's going to go a little wider. And the truss itself would just be naturally taller just to get the pitch right.
Right. Yeah, if you're talking to him, and I'm doing 512, which matches the pitch of the house and all that, and so for each foot, you're going up another five inches. You really cut that in half, though, that four feet, because you're going two feet on each side, that's where I get the tent. So again, I could come with the floor, the second floor, I could come down probably six inches and still be okay. And that means that it would only be about four inches taller if that helps some of the section.
Any other questions?
No.
Then I guess I will, go ahead, Eric.
I've got a few comments, Kimball. I just, I just looked at an aerial view of what the yard, and then some surrounding areas, and I noticed there's actually a number of homes that take quite a bit of the lot. So you're not, you're not the lone wolf here. There's, for instance, 804, the house to your south. It's length from house, including the house, the total length of the house is equal to what you're asking for, for the house, the yard, and the garage. And so 804, and then the house behind you, which is 815, that also, it takes up more than the 30% that's the code right now. You're asking for 40, just so everyone's aware. And so I just, I looked, the views wouldn't be affected of the house to your south, that the yield wouldn't change. And then the house to your west, Mary Kay, she's fully supportive of this change, so she would be most affected by this, but she's, she's on board. And then I do know the planning commission next month is talking about looking at expanding and changing zoning, and Marty's, Marty's on board with this, but one of those, they're possibly considering, and this is to get more diverse housing options, including ADUs, for instance, allowing that, and which I'm kind of a fan of that, enabling smaller homes to be added to the city to try to help with accessible housing. This would be a perfect ADU for, I'm not, I'm not saying, yeah, your name, but I'm just saying this is a perfect accessory building, living space, that sort of thing.
But to be clear right now, or right now, we are not doing that. That is part of the zoning, or part of the original approval.
Right, yeah, and I'm not, I'm not stating this at all. I'm not, I'm just saying that in the future, we're gonna, the zone planning is going to talk about changing these zoning laws, for instance, possibly this 30%, to help with the housing needs in the area. And then lastly, I think approval would help move your trailers and your boats off the street. You've got a crowded corner there, so I just wanted to support you on that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Then I guess we'll open it up for public comments regarding this. Come on up. Just state your name and address.
My name is Dale LaBonne, 904 Riverside Drive. I live right across the side street from Patty and Kimball. And Kimball has talked to me about this and kept me impressed about all this because we're, you know, we're right across the side street. And besides the two, the two, the house next to him and the house behind him that you talked about, the house behind me has got a monstrosity of a garage, too. So, you know, so for, I would hope that you're not going to give Kimball a hard time, Kimball Patty a hard time, about this variance, and let him put up the kind of building that he needs to put up so he can live there comfortably and store his vehicles and boats and campers and all that kind of good stuff. It's not going to be a problem as far as my wife and I are concerned, and I don't think any of the other neighbors have a problem with it at all either. So please consider allowing the variance and let him get going on this and get it done. Thank you.
Anyone else? Then we'll go ahead and.
Don't be.
Well, go ahead. Come on up.
Carolyn Berry at 407 Foreman. I'm right opposite Hudson and Foreman. I would like to know that the square footage, is there a reason initially it was at 960? The reason behind that? And maybe the reason why the 40% increase in the size beyond the zoning laws? Does anybody know why it was established at 960?
Well, I think, I think Kimball might have been met with Andy and them, and at that time, it might have been what was one of the considerations? It was smaller, but yet he thought that would be, I think that was what it was that he.
960 is because it's a smaller lot size. 960 is what the zoning laws or the zoning regulations specify. If we were up to 9,000 square feet for the size of the lot, then we would have been a lot of 1,200 square.
So there's a correlation? Is there a formula that the city has where?
Just two sizes.
For the lot size compared against an outbuilding size? Is there a correlation for this? Or does the city have a formula that they use or?
That I don't know. Are you representing Williams &amp; Works? You have an answer?
Sure. So there's not a formula per se, but as the applicant noted, there's, there's two sizes. And for his size of lot, 960 is the maximal square footage for accessory building.
Yeah, I understand that, but is there the reason behind that number? Is there?
I don't know what the reason is behind that particular number. A standard two-story garage is about 576 square feet. And so in neighborhoods that are more dense, sometimes you have, and there's also lot coverage maximums, you have to put a cap on the size of an accessory building so that it's not taking up the entire rear yard. Why is that thing? I don't know. There's a lot of communities that have those kind of coverage.
Is there a correlation? Like if there was an emergency situation for a fire or something else where this would interfere with that in any way?
We have like the only fire hydrant on the street.
Well, I'm not talking about that. That fire hydrant is not the issue.
Okay.
It's the availability of a vehicle or some type of equipment to get in there where they wouldn't have to worry about, you know, because of the structure was so big that they wouldn't have enough room to maneuver. You know, I understand, I was on the planning commission for a few years, and people would come into a housing that they purchased and expect to, you know, copy, you know, change before they even bought it, they knew what they were buying, I assume. So to come into this situation where the house is saying, well, I want a, I want, I got four trucks, and I got a pontoon boat, and I want to put that into a, I want to make a building so that it'll all fit in there. You know, where does this? You know, what if he's got five trucks? Do we just make it bigger so, you know, he can have five trucks in there and a pontoon boat? I think there's, there's some reasoning behind why these outbuildings are the size that they are. I think safety has, you know, is one reason behind that. There could be other reasons. But just, you go into a home, you purchase it, you know what you're buying. You know what, you know, you know your lot, you know what you're limited to. But because, oh, I want this, and I want that, and I want this, then I can, I can put up this building and stick everything in there. You know, and I would assume my, if somebody wanted the space to, or structure to house these vehicles that they have, they would probably look for a space, a housing area, but they could do that. But to come into something and then later say, oh, I want to change this because I got this and I got that, and I want to keep it inside. That doesn't necessarily mean, you know, I mean, you don't always get what you want. I would assume that if you're going to, you know, purchase a housing unit and you have all this other extra, you know, most people don't have three trucks or a pontoon boat, you know, that they want to put on their property. If they did, usually it's out, farther out in the country somewhere, where they can do that without instructing anything.
Okay, well, thank you for your input. You got a three minute, and you exceeded that three minutes, so thank you very much for, for your time, and we'll consider your thoughts.
Okay, I just officially, I want to say I'm not, I mean, I'm not against the gentleman, but I'm not in favor of a structure that large. I don't, you know, I mean, if he want, if he's within a reasonable limit of the zoning regulations, I don't see a problem with that, but when you come up with a 40 to 50%.
Sir, sir, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I think my only interjection is it's not 40% larger than what was allowed. It is 40% lot coverage with the house, and that may be causing confusion. Please proceed, I'm sorry.
Barry.
Perry Beecham, 924 Riverside Drive, and I just want to, I'm in favor. I don't think it will be out of place in the neighborhood, and I would hope that the council would approve this recommendation. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? If not, we'll close this session and this part of it and go on with, now, I know he's come in before and we approved eight. I don't know if we need to go through every line item once again on that part of it. So if that's the case, we're probably going to need your assistance and support on that, so we'll go ahead with that.
Thank you. So I'm Patricia Anderson with Williams &amp; Works, filling in for Andy Moore tonight. And I've had a chance to review the request. Andy's briefed me on, you know, kind of the history with the previous variance that was granted in September. And so in hearing some of the comments that, that have been made, you know, when you, when you request a variance, you're asking for essentially relief from the ordinance, or you're asking for permission to violate the ordinance. And I'm sure Andy has explained this to you all at length. And so I think what's really important to understand is that a variance can be granted usually when there is a practical difficulty in meeting the letter of the ordinance. And so a practical difficulty that causes an undue hardship in not being able to enjoy one's property in the same manner as others in the same general vicinity in the same zoning district usually come in the form of, you know, like steep topography, or, you know, a lot of encumbrances by wetlands or other unbuildable areas, or maybe encumbrances from easements and things like that. So it generally has to do with the land. What is the hardship in meeting the letter of the ordinance as it relates to the land? Is the land or the lot in oddball shape, which would, you know, make it nearly impossible to fit an accessory building of any size on the lot? And so it's, it's sometimes hard to take out all those other variables that, you know, usually come into play when people have requests to make things bigger or to place things in a different spot than what the ordinance allows. And so I won't go through each standard, but I just wanted to point out that the zoning board is tasked with either granting a variance or denying the variance. And in order for the variance to be granted, all of the standards that are provided to you out of the ordinance should all be met. And, you know, Andy's done the analysis on this request, and, and I've reviewed it. And, you know, he wanted me to emphasize that, you know, that the exceptional or extraordinary circumstances that we just talked about that may exist on a lot that would warrant a variance aren't really present on this particular lot. But the, the variance was granted for the last building for the 1,200 square foot building, 1,232 square foot building, which was over the maximum square footage of 960 for this zoning district. And it, it did not exceed the 30% lot coverage. The, so that in, in it of itself, you know, would, would indicate that, that, that the, that the zoning board, the city has already determined that the lot can be used and has been, and has given express permission to use the lot for a larger-than-permitted accessory building. And so, you know, number three, where the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property rights similar to that possessed by other properties in the same zoning district and, and in the vicinity. The, the applicant was afforded the right to build a larger-than-permissible accessory building per the last variance that was, that was granted. And then, you know, we asked for, or I think, I think Andy wanted to kind of, you know, see how things shook out with public comment tonight to, to have the zoning board determine if there would be any detriment to the surrounding neighborhood. It doesn't sound like there would be necessarily. There was mention of a neighbor directly behind this subject property that, that was fine with the request, but as we know, properties change hands and the variance stays with the land. So that is something to take into consideration, even though I, I just wanted to point, point out that I don't think that that necessarily is cause of detriment, but it's just something that's important to remember that when you do grant a variance, it stays with the land. And then number five, the variance will not impair the intent and purpose of the ordinance. So you may have read in Andy's report that, that granting this variance would actually undermine the zoning ordinance. And so he was having a hard time and felt that it was debatable as to how the justification for asking for a larger building was compelling enough, compelling enough reason to justify granting another variance. So this, this is, you know, not your typical variance request to ask for an additional variance. Generally, when you ask for a variance, it's usually the least amount possible so that your, your, the granting of the variance is the, is the least relief possible under the ordinance. And so I think, you know, I'll be the bad guy here and say that, you know, as, as the city's planning consultant, Andy does not believe that, that the zoning board should grant this variance, but the zoning board will have to make a determination as to where they stand on each of those standards, given the analysis provided in the report. Any questions?
Also, with that in mind, so we need to go through all six, and could you help us do that? What is number one?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, I, I thought I heard you say, I don't think we need to go through every standard.
Well, I, well, originally, we did six for six. And the biggest thing that we're looking at now is the actual physical size change more than anything like that part of it. So with that, you're saying that, that Andy feels that does not meet the criteria.
Right.
Today, so.
Yes. So, so the first one being the exceptional or extraordinary circumstances, you know, the, the analysis was that the additional request for, for more square footage does not demonstrate that there is an actual extraordinary circumstance related to the land itself. There may be an extraordinary circumstance with the applicant's rationale in terms of how much space he might need in order to park the vehicles in the garage that he needs. But as far as relating the property itself to the exceptional or extraordinary circumstance, you know, the determination was that, you know, complying with the zoning ordinance, you know, when you're asking the question of would it be unnecessarily burdensome to meet the letter of the ordinance because of the exceptional or extraordinary circumstance? I think the answer here is that it, it would not be because the zoning board has already granted a variance for this accessory building. And then number two, which is related to whether the condition or the situation being of a recurrent nature and whether it's warranted to make a change in the regulations or make a zoning ordinance amendment, so that would be like, yes. Yes.
Jim, can, do you want to vote on each one as she does it, or do you want to do it as a package?
As a package.
Okay.
What do you think, Mike?
He has to meet them all.
Yes.
Right? So if he doesn't meet one of the early ones, are we going through the rest of them unnecessarily? I know for the first variance, we voted individually, but.
That's correct.
It's up to you, whatever you want to do.
We could stay with what the way we've been doing. We could do the one-on-ones, so, so we'll go ahead and vote, vote on number one, which was, I'm trying to find it here.
Exceptional or extraordinary.
Yeah, the exceptionals or extraordinary circumstances. I think we, last time we passed that due to the shape and size of the lot is why we did it, because it's not your conforming square lot, it is an odd-shaped lot. So with that, I don't see that changing the lot as a lot. That is not changed. So, so that on mine, I would still agree with that one. Did we, did we vote on those individually? Yeah, so with that, Suzie, we'll need a vote on the first one.
Board member Groves?
Yes.
Yes.
Board member Chambers?
No.
Board member Barkis?
Yes.
Board member DeVor?
Y-yes.
And Chair Salzweedl?
Yes. Number two, the conditions or situations of a specific piece of property for which we variance is on is not or still general or recurrent in nature as to make reasonable practices formulation to a general regulation for such conditions or situations.
I would argue that that's still met. None of the conditions or situations have changed to the point where the thing should be revised. I don't think.
All right.
I don't think that it's met.
Any other questions, concerns? Suzie, vote on that, please.
Board member Groves?
Yes.
Board member Chambers?
Yes.
Board member Barkis?
Yes.
Board member DeVor?
Yes.
And Chair Salzweedl?
Yes. Number three, the such variance is necessary to the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right similar to the possessed by other properties in the same zoning district and in the vicinity. Possibility of increasing financial return and shall not itself be deemed sufficient to warrant a variance. Any comments on that? With that, no comments, we'll look for a vote. Sue?
Board member Groves?
Yes.
Board member Chambers?
Yes.
Board member Barkis?
Yes.
Board member DeVor?
Yes.
And Chair Salzweedl?
Yes. Number four, the variance will not be sufficiently determinative to adjacent, adjacent properties in the surrounding neighborhoods. Last time this was allowed, any other questions? Suzie, vote on number four, please.
Board member Groves?
Yes.
Board member Chambers?
Yes.
Board member Barkis?
Yes.
Board member DeVor?
Yes.
And Chair Salzweedl?
Yes. Number five, the variance will not impair the intent and purpose of this ordinance. Any questions? Suzie, vote on number five, please.
Board member Groves?
Yes.
Board member Chambers?
Yes.
Board member Barkis?
Yes.
Board member DeVor?
Yes.
And Chair Salzweedl?
Yes. Number six, the immediate particular difficulty causing the need for a variance request was not created by or affirmatively actions of the applicant. I think, I think, Mike, you said it last time, that he wasn't wrong with the house he built?
No, but this one is different to me because you are in control of what items you purchase and when you upgrade and when they grow in size. So this one I'm in a little trouble with.
Well, I, I, maybe I can help you. I know before he came here, he looked at A, B, and C.
Correct.
And based on, um, suggestions from, from Andy, he went with a smaller version. But, but I know in his heart, if he could have redone it, he probably would have came with the option D right away and that part of it. And, and, you know, last week we talked about A, B, and C and we could only discuss A at that time. So, um, I can see if he went on and bought something today. I know we talked about a future conference, I did have a room in that part of it. So that's the only thing that, that I see. It's not like he went on and bought.
No, but this is planned to purchase at least two or no items, not for a struggle.
Okay. Yep. Well, one, he's replacing with an existing camper, a pop-up. And at my age, I know what it feels like to try to use a pop-up camper versus having one you can just walk in. But, but that's okay that you, you have a concern about that, Mike. Anybody else have a thought on that, why we're discussing six?
I mean, we specifically told him to bring it back if he wasn't pleased with the size that we granted him, right? Like, we were the ones who asked him to come back if he wanted it.
We gave him that as an option, I think he could come back.
Absolutely did.
As an option, what did you care T would be?
No, no, I'm not saying we hear in T that. I'm just saying, we, we gave him that choice, right? So he, with that choice, he had us go over the one that he applied for initially, right? Whereas if we had said to him, we want an LBL this evening, he may have chosen a different one of us to look at or not had us done it at all. So I, I think we should be very cognizant of what we asked of him and how we asked it.
The other thing too is, is Andy's pretty smart at what he does, right? So if Andy's got a concern. I'm just applying the standard how I'm reading it. It's, uh, you know, if this was the first one suggested, I can't say that I would have applied the standard any differently, but we can vote on it. I have said my piece.
Okay, thank you. With that said, we'll move for a vote on number six.
Board member Groves?
Yes.
Board member Chambers?
No.
Board member Barkis?
Yes.
Board member DeVor?
No.
And Chair Salzweedl?
Yes. With that, it looks like the motion has been passed to approve the variance for this property.
We're gonna keep the same conditions?
Absolutely correct, the living quarters or that, that part of it, yes, absolutely correct. Yep. Um, with that, we'll go down now. Boarding commission reports, anybody?
No, sir.
Uh, any comments?
No, sir.
Uh, Michael, may I?
I move with turn at seven thirty-five.
And we'll come back in five minutes for your reading.
Perfect, no support.
I favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you.